Good morning. Call this the Commissioners Court Meeting to Order. Today's date is April seventh, twenty twenty-five, nine a.m. Before we begin, we'll have our prayer and our pledge. Commissioner Martin, would you please lead us in the prayers?
Yeah. Bow your heads and pray with me. Father God, we come to you today to just thank you for everything that you've provided to us. Lord, we thank you for the small amount of rain we received recently. Lord, we just ask that you would consider blessing us with more. And Father, we just ask that you bless the proceedings of this court today. Lord, we know there are many people out there who are sick and are in need of your healing, and, Lord, who may have lost loved ones who need your comfort. Lord, we just ask that everything we do today be to bless the glory of your name. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Glory to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, before we begin the meeting, for the minutes, we do have a forum. We do have Commissioner King out. Move to public comments, or we have one. Commissioner Martin?
Thank you, Judge, yeah. So I wanted to form the court of an incident we had last week. One of our employees was walking in, the north portico right down here below us, and three chunks of concrete fell off of that portico. Fortunately, he wasn't injured, didn't hit him, but that possibility exists regularly. We closed that entrance down there because of that. We need to move forward with renovating all three of the porticos and looking at some of the keystones around the building. I talked to Doug Fazy. He came out and looked at it, and with Simon, and so he should be working on some proposals. But we certainly need to put a priority to getting that done as quickly as possible with all the historical requirements met with the state.
I agree, Commissioner. So we do have some bids going out to Simon Doug, so they're looking into that. We'll get that taken care of quickly. All right. Move to agenda item number three. Brenda, the revenue county auditor will go to three A discussion related to county grant applications and procurement requirements.
Good morning, Commissioner James, thank you. I wanted to thank you for calling this special court. On March twenty-sixth, Wilson County went out for an RFQ as approved by the court, seeking a qualified grant writing firm to assist in identifying, applying for, and managing grant opportunities for county projects, programs, and services. That was advertised in the Wilson County News on the twenty-sixth of March for two weeks. And the deadline to submit those RFQs as it stands today is Monday, April the fourteenth. So the current plan is to receive those and open those RFQs in court on Monday the fourteenth. However, I did receive multiple calls from some very prominent vendors, three as a matter of fact, who wanted to ensure if this is the route that we wanted to take. And the reason is most, well, all federal and state grants require the county to go out for requests for proposals from grant writing firms that were utilizing federal and state funding to pay for those services. And that is grant specific. So what that means is, let's say, a grant opportunity comes out for, from the general land office for something. At the time that we're writing that grant application, we have to submit for grant writing services in order for that grant to pay for the services of the grant writer submitting that application. And so the concerns that three of these vendors had was that if they respond to our current RFQ, that precludes them then from being eligible to be the grant writer for any potential future grants for the county. So that would make them ineligible to do that for us. So we went back and forth. I consulted with our county attorney's office, to which is why you see item B on the agenda. The reason for, it's all about timing, because I don't, I certainly don't want these vendors to, any other vendors, because we sent it out to multiple people, multiple work companies. I certainly don't want them to go through all the hoops of putting together something for us only for us to not do anything about it on Monday when the deadline comes. I was asked by one of the commissioners to find out what other counties, surrounding counties, are doing in terms of grant administration services. And so I was able to get responses from Karnes, Frio, and Guadalupe County. Karnes and Guadalupe, they do not have an in-house grant writer, nor do they have a grant writing firm on retainer. They do, what Wilson County has previously done in the past is every elected official or department head is responsible for researching their own grant opportunities. Every department is responsible for even writing and submitting their own grants. And prior to 2019, that's the way it always had been here in Wilson County. And then the auditor's office was the office responsible for the submission of reporting and reimbursement requests. So that is what Guadalupe County does. Guadalupe County also has a procurement department, so they have the overhead. They have the people that are able to even, even if they needed somebody to do some research, they have them. Karnes County does the same thing that Guadalupe does. They do not have anybody in-house, nor do they have anyone on retainer. And they also follow the two CFR two hundred guidelines in terms of procuring a grant writing firm depending on the grant. Now, Frio has a grant writing firm on retainer to which they pay three thousand dollars a month and have had that firm on retainer since 2023. And since 2023, that firm has written fourteen grant applications, and out of the fourteen has only been awarded one. And so they're very frustrated. So they're in the same situation. So that's why I wanted to leave it up for discussion for you guys to determine how you want to proceed. I don't believe that the grant writing firms who are the experts at this want to be excluded from any potential opportunity in the future for funding. So we may not get any that will respond, the ones that we need that will respond by Monday. So I just wanted to leave it open for discussion and answer any questions that you may have.
So we didn't advertise this any different than we did, what, a year ago?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay, so I'm just kind of curious as to why it came up. Didn't come up last time. However...
Well, last time, Commissioner, honestly, I do not believe that we posted a public advertisement for an RFQ for a grant writing firm. What happened last time is we had...
We had several people come in, you know?
Several people come to court to present to you their services. And I believe that's how EMC, or EMC Strategy Group was selected.
Yeah. But they still didn't bring, I mean, some of those people didn't bring this up either.
That is correct.
Yeah, so. But what, I mean, I feel like our need is we need somebody watching this stuff. And if Kayla can't do it because she's administering all the county applied for grants, then that's the problem, and that's what, that's what I'd like to find a solution for. I mean, I think we need someone somehow, whether that's our own person or a consultant that helps us. We always seem to find out these things at the last minute where we only have a week to, you know...
Let me, I did want to share some additional information with you. So the same day that I found all of this and consulted with the county attorney, I happened to, Judge and I actually had a meeting with the Texas General Land Office on something else. And so at the end of that meeting, we asked if they could stay on so that I could ask some questions related to this. I wanted to confirm the information. And so they did say that, you know, yes, all of that is true. They also said that there is not, if our, if our, if the court's thinking is that there is a lot of money sitting out there that we're losing or we're not capturing, that is not actually true. Nine times out of ten, your state and your federal grant funding becomes available during declared disasters. And Wilson County must be one of the counties in a declared disaster, but also must be one of the targeted areas. And so if we don't meet those two criteria, then we're not going to get any money. And so we're talking about the, you know, hundreds of thousands, half million, million-dollar grants available. That is, those come up when disasters happen. There is not a lot of funding out there that's just sitting out there to maintain or fix roads and bridges unless it's related to a disaster. So what the GLO said was, there are avenues, and I actually researched Tac's website. Tac keeps their, they have a grant tab on there, and they keep it updated weekly with grant opportunities. So I went in last week to go pull, and you can filter it by infrastructure, road and bridge, public safety, sheriff's department. And so I selected each one of those, and under road and bridge, there was zero. Yeah, there may have been one, and it was not related. It was for the, where the ships, what is it called? Where the ships, dot port, port something, yeah, nothing related to us. So I certainly, I don't, I do not believe that we're missing out on a lot that's out there. Between Kayla and I, we do manage to write the grants for Operation Lone Star, for our county attorney's office. These are through ACOG and the governor's office. Those are smaller grants that we have had in the past, so they're a little bit easier for the three, you know, or four of us to work together to write those. And fortunately, we've been able to secure that grant funding. But for your larger federal and state funding opportunities, there's just not a whole lot out there, right? You know, and we are made aware when some, when the county does become eligible. Fortunately and unfortunately, I guess fortunately for us, we have not been one of those counties that's a targeted area, even though, for example, Hurricane Beryl, there was, there is a current disaster declared for that, but we're too far away from the coast to be considered one of the target areas. We're in the boundaries, but we won't get any funding because it's designed to assist those counties that are directly impacted. So I didn't put an action item on A because I wanted us to have some open discussion, but I would like to make a recommendation that, or just offer you some suggestions to consider for future is, you know, like Commissioner, like you said, have, you know, who, who can we have doing research so that we don't miss out on any of those opportunities when some do come up available? We have the option, the court has the option. If you want to hire a firm or a consultant on a retainer, paying them a monthly fee, you certainly have that option to do that. I don't, I don't, we have to, you know, go out for an RFQ and put something together like that. I don't know that that expense would, would, that we would see a great return on our investment just based on what we experienced last year. But again, that is the court's decision. The other option is leaving it up to each elected official to do their own research. And if something, if you do see something that comes available that you believe the county is eligible for, then we go out for an RFP to hire a firm such, you know, such as the ones that we sent out the RFQ to, Grant Works, Trailer, all of them, there's a list of them, and we can do that. At this point, yes, to answer your question, Kayla and I, you know, that is not in our wheelhouse nor do we have the time to sit and research grants or write the big grant applications. So that is just something for your consideration.
Okay, so I think I got your point on that. So you're, let's move to three B because that is an action. You're asking us to withdraw RFQ twenty-five dash one zero zero three. And then what would you do to proceed from there?
That would be up for the court. I would imagine that that would allow us time then to have some discussion on what we want to put on the court agenda for the fourteenth and how you want to move forward, if anything. My request to withdraw RFQ for Monday the fourteenth is so that it allows those vendors who typically would respond to an actual RFQ for a specific grant to allow them the opportunity for future consideration. Because those are the companies that we're going to need.
All right, Commissioner Zong, there can be a motion on thirteen B to withdraw RFQ dash twenty-five dash one zero zero three grant writing services.
Make a motion to withdraw RFQ twenty-five dash one thousand three.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Is there any other discussion regarding agenda item three B?
I would like to say, so that the public knows, you know, we all tried very hard to get the raise grant, and then we finally got notified that, okay, you don't get it. And they don't tell you where you missed out, what they thought was going to be more powerful. If it went to areas that are more poverty-stricken, you know, the public needs to know that we are actually working to try to get back our tax dollars from the government.
Oh, one hundred percent, wherever there's, where we can.
To the community and Wilson County.
Sure, sure, absolutely. And the other thing, the other recommendation, something that you may consider, is rather than paying a company or, you know, consultant monthly, on a monthly retainer, you might consider paying, contracting with someone to, you know, buy the hour, pay somebody, you know, a few hundred dollars a month, you know, to spend one or two hours a week researching to see if there's something out there, and that consultant can work with my office. And if something becomes available, we can go out for an RFQ to secure a grant writing firm. So that's another option for you to consider.
I think that, I think that's kind of the minimum that we need.
Yeah.
Because we just need somebody that's got time and knows what to look for to help us out so that we can give them the, here's the bucket I want you to be looking for, and you find the bucket for us.
Yeah, yeah, because it's not enough work to keep, and we've experienced that before in the past. It's not enough work to keep somebody full-time, forty hours a week, doing that. But it's definitely a need.
And the problem is they become more scarce.
Yeah.
We know it's hard right now with the change that the federal law is going on. There just may not be a lot of people down.
Yeah. Or holds on the current applications that we do have.
I mean, holds on things regardless.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If there are none, I'll call for the votes. If there are, say aye.
Aye.
All who are against, motion passes. Agenda item number four, we have Commissioner Perdola, precinct three. The half repair estimate for Cooper Equipment Company is for discussion and a possible action to repair entire distributor serial, serial number S six two eight six. Commissioner Yelich?
Just to bring this before y'all and let y'all know what's going on, I did want to approve this repair without talking to y'all. It's a sizable amount, thirteen thousand, three ninety-nine, forty-eight cents. The main pump on it did not pass the test that they performed on it. It failed. The last time I used the truck, the pump actually blocked up, and I almost couldn't get two thousand down a load of hot tar off of it. So it either has to be repaired or it's not usable. But I wanted y'all to be aware of what it was going to cost to repair it. And we should put the truck back in good working order for a lot of service to come. So there was one thing I forgot, and it's the wash pump on the back to spray down the back end with at least a few, and he said that would be up maybe a couple hundred dollars. Sure, so that would be, he's going to check that out today. It'd be a little bit additional to what we're looking at here, so, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, I just wanted to clarify, typically, the repairs on equipment don't need to go through court, but this is a piece of shared equipment?
That's correct.
Okay, between all four precincts and, okay.
Yes, that's why I didn't want just to prove it without the other commissioners knowing about it and saying yes, you know, because it affects each commissioner's budget.
Do all organizations use this?
Yep. Well, I mean, that was our intention, was to have it for a backup. And I mean, if it don't work, then it's worthless.
Yeah, if we don't repair it, the truck is not usable.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to be the guy that said, hey, okay, I spent thirteen thousand. The rest of the commission would know what we're looking like to repair it.
Who votes necessary? Item on the opinion motion?
I'll make a motion to repair the Ettnar distributor truck serial number six two eight six.
Second.
I like to pick one.
Thirty-three.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do you have any other further discussion regarding agenda item number four?
I'd like to let the public know that this piece of equipment and the new truck that is also a shared piece of equipment with all four precincts are both broken at the same time. And we've been very disappointed in the manufacturer of the new truck and the process that we've gone through, and we'll get it warranty and try to get it back up and running. And further, I want to let the public know that these vehicles are vital to us being able to do the job in fixing and/or improving the road surfaces. We try to be as fair-minded as possible when it comes to making expenses, but it's painfully obvious right now, we're all at a shutdown on the standstill because the two that we have used are booked out of service. Precinct four, thankfully, Commissioner Wiley had bought a used Tex- dot truck, and I was able to use it exclusively to do work in form. And the other three commissioners were able to use this here truck that we're paying the bill on now. My truck has since fallen apart, so whatever repair cost estimate from the vendor was seventy, eighty thousand dollars, and we can't spend that to repair that truck that was from the last century. So we're trying to do right by the voting public, but we may be faced with getting another shared vehicle because of the way the older truck is becoming obsolete, and the newer one is already having problems. It's making everyone worried.
Any other comments? All for a question, all who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who are against, motion passes. Agenda item number five, we have Ms. Presidente, our county attorney, discuss, take action on county attorney's request to change the full-time investigator's position to two part-time positions in SB twenty-two five.
Good morning. I'm giving ahead and present this this morning. Yes, we are asking the court's approval to change the designation of a couple of staff positions. We currently have a full-time investigator, but that investigator will be leaving in office. There just wasn't enough work for him to maintain a full-time position. And so there is now a need for additional legal services to service the JP courts. For them, all of the truancy cases now go to JP one, and we are having to schedule to get that done. And then the JP judges are wanting to schedule more court dates. And so the request is made to continue a full-time pay, so it's not going to change the budget at all. But we're asking for a part-time investigator and then a part-time attorney to fill the needs of the JP courts. The funding is still under SB twenty-two, so it will be at no additional cost to the county. It's just a realignment of this one position to turn it into two part-time positions.
Does the review would be in the guidelines to do that?
Yes, I've met extensively with the attorney's office and have out, I've met extensively with the attorney's office and have outlined how much, how much they have available for both positions, depending on the number of hours. But yes, they are within the guidelines.
Do we need to take an action on this?
Yes, I would recommend, and the reason I ask for it to be a court decision is so that, because it affects things for us on the back end in terms of HR having to create two part-time positions in our software. And for payroll purposes, that changes everything. And on our budget side, it changes things as well, reallocating things, not the overall dollar amount.
Do you have a line?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So where they wouldn't, right now, currently don't have a part timeline items, they would now, once you're, if you approve.
Would be two part-time positions.
Would this be the investigator or the advisor's absence, or for Mr. Mercer? Mercer. All right, Commissioner, if I want to take a vote on agenda item number five?
Make a motion that we stop having the full-time investigator position and transition into two part-time positions, one for the investigator and one for the attorney.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Any further discussion on agenda item number five?
And I guess just for clarification, what you're saying is, is these two, these two people would probably work together a lot, and they're going to primarily be in the JP court handling.
Yes, it's to fill the additional needs coming from the JP courts. That's why it would be part-time. The staff we have is currently serving the county court and all the other needs, so yes, it would have to fill that.
I guess the only other question I have is, I get, does it, should he add and to make a budget amendment to take this change?
Excuse me, no, sir. There wouldn't be an actual budget amendment because we're not reallocating, we're not moving funds around. We're just creating a position, creating two part-time positions, and we'll split it on my end, since it doesn't affect the overall budget.
And just for clarification, the amounts that we would have had left over from first position, would just be split into two positions?
Yeah.
Do we all agree to make part-time?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? Not a call for the vote, all who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who are against, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner. We moved agenda item number six. We have Commissioner Aiken discuss, take action on approval of resolution in support of the passage of HB two thirty-eight as introduced by State Representative Dean to the House Committee on Higher Education to authorize a community college in Wilson County. This resolution supports the Texas State Technical College System in Waco, Texas, as referenced in House Bill number eight from the twenty-twenty-three legislature. And I think you have somebody that's spoken to come in.
Yes, Mr. Rosenberg.
Mr. Rosenberg? May I take a poll?
All right. Good morning. This voice may not continue too well. The resolution was accurate, stated, and I believe, Commissioner Aiken, that's what we talked about Friday, and that's the way I recommend the court proceed. I have some background for this, and I don't, Judge, I need to ask you for how much to go into on this. This was an idea of the Wilson Area Children's Foundation that came up in 2019. It's a little long and a gestation period, but I mentioned this to you some weeks ago, maybe a month or two ago, and you took the step of coming to the commission again, I think, and suggesting that this is a good idea. And basically, I need to give some background to all of you on what's cooking here. This resolution is a bit of a, I think, a cleanup from House Bill eight that got passed in two thousand... This resolution is a bit of a, I think, a cleanup from House Bill eight that got passed in two thousand twenty-three. House Bill eight, I don't know extensively, but basically set up a comprehensive Texas commission to deal with the first two years of what you call junior college in my terms. And we got left out. So when, when Representative Ginn sent this over to the judge, the judge called me and he said, you know, we need to attend to this. So what I did is paid attention to the fact that it has Starr County, which is part of the, the judge, not the judge, part of the representative's district, and it has Wilson County added for the first time. And why did it want to add the last time was, at this point, unknown to me. So I did a memo on what I did and I don't know that this memo reached all of you. So I might have permission, I'd like to pass this memo out as a checklist. May I?
Yes, sir. You give me all of them and I'll just pass them.
Now, the, the bill, well, that's being passed out, the bill itself has some distinction between what the effect would be on this county versus the effect on Starr County. And it looks like the commission provides for this regulation, it's a coordinating board. It looks like there'd be possibility of structuring this county. It looks like they would not be structuring it in Starr County. I've not had a chance to follow through on that. And that's why I want to go down this little memo that I prepared after spending a week ago Friday in Austin on this matter. And if you bear with me, let's just run down this so we're all together on this. What I had was a conference with Matt Root, Senator, the legislative staffer, who had been trying to reach by phone and Representative Ginn's office, and made the contact through both, from Santa Solis. And this is all outfitting down the hallways, as you know. The only way to make contact in most of these cases is to get into their office and have personal contact with the people involved. I was trying to get to Andrew Hartley, the House Higher Education Committee. I called him earlier. And eventually after standing in the hallway waiting for him to finish a meeting at four o'clock in the afternoon on Friday, I was able to discuss with him what happens next or what should happen next. And what needs to happen next is this needs to be structured as a presentation to the chairman of the committee, which is the chair, Terry Wilson, here that you have in front of you, okay? And the process to get there with some success or some possibility of success is to prepare some form of a supporting memorandum or some kind of a document that shows that we deserve to be where we want to be, which is before the Texas State Technical College System, which operates with a coordinating board, kind of like A and M and UT, but for the technical schools. And the next steps for this were to get the commissioners from Wilson County Court, Wilson County Commissioners Court, your economic development entity in the five school districts, and any chamber commerce and other interested groups to express an interest in this, in the taxes accompanying the members of the committee. And what it was basically given here was, if you want to call it a checklist of what we need to do in fairly short order. And so after coming back from this, I prepared the memo to the judge and set about contacting the primary, I think, primary school district, Dr. Dilpin. And he set up a meeting for Tuesday last week with Maggie, she responded on Thursday. I replied to him last night, that yes, there's some other counties that have not had great, great success with this program, but some success is a heck of a lot better than none. And so I'm asking to go back and reassemble the other school districts in the county, about a total of five. Let me explain kind of the backdrop of how I got into this situation. Wilson Area Children's Foundation about six years ago, I guess, started giving five hundred dollar scholarships to two students per school at the end of their senior year. And in the FISD context, that's a real small amount of money because they give away four or five hundred thousand dollars of all scholarships involved. When you get down to people like Mrs. Smiley, that's a lot of money for them, okay? What I was able to discern out of this, partially because my daughter was involved in her first assignment at Mrs. Smiley, was that for somebody like Mrs. Smiley, travel money to get to college or travel money to do post-high school work is a significant amount of money if they're going to Powell's or if they're going over next door to maybe Wildwood County or all those cousins. And so there's a big gap between what's available to FISD students and what's not available to others. That's one problem. The other problem is, is the program is not structured. And we were aware of this with Wilson Area Children's Foundation, but we thought the scholarships were worth doing out. And we had one daughter that helps us every year and so we were, been doing this for a number of years. When the matter of introducing this legislation came about, I did a little research and found out that House Bill eight that passed last year, I found out we were in the bucket. And so basically what I'm asking you to do is to say to Representative Ginn, yes, we want the money you're offering. Please put us on expedited docket or help us with expedited docket. And I'm asking you gentlemen to pass a resolution saying you want to be our deserved expedited docket and see if we can proceed forward and getting what are the benefits there are to be gotten out of this program. It's kind of a short version, I don't know what's, what the pot at all consists of at the end of the deal, but I know we're not in consideration for the pot at all. And this is something within Representative Ginn's control, who wants to push forward that legislation. Now, the one thing that I do want to say, when you correct, I think, was the deal of the Senate is not on board yet. I did ask for Mr. Monta Mayor in that office to put us on board and I affirmed that he'd been requested, that she'd been requested by the judge, we put on the list. But we need to do something official or more official to probably ask her to do it. Senator Zaffarelli has made her career on education. I'm sure most of you know she's responsible for that college, International College Center, I think it's in the label, or where it is. And she's been a very pro-education supporter for the last fifty years of the Senate. So I don't think you've got a hard sell, but she's a very busy woman, it's hard to get in to see her sometimes. And while I left a request with Monta Mayor, I think they made something a little higher level than that.
I'm just for the record, I reached out to Mike to their office and talked to Mr. Monta Mayor about it. You and I are going to be there on the fifteenth, so.
I think we're going to have to get there.
So we'll go to their office and wait and work.
But anyway, this, you were just talking about grants. Don't know that this is a grant, grant. I think this is getting qualified. I think we've got two things to do that may not be altogether pleasant. One is we got to get all our school districts together or at least to some extent on the same page. I think with the leadership of the FISD superintendent, who's very knowledgeable or seemed to be very knowledgeable in this area, he's already taken steps to come to Red Oak about it. We've got some good leadership, but he seemed quite willing to assume the leadership role between the superintendents and get a lot to do that. And I think he's got a deal with them coming up this week. So hopefully we have something we can tell you about moving that school. Secondly, they're looking for something from your economic development group that you all have appointed. And I've talked briefly to Tally. He was going to talk to some of his legislative representatives in the insurance industry, but I think they need something more formal from your economic group saying you want this. And I'm not reporting to be altogether knowledgeable about what's House Bill eight did. So I probably have some research to do and put to the judge and the rest of you on what on HP. HBA does, namely, you get, you qualify. But it looks, when you read the bill that you have in front of you and the two pages of the bill, it looks like the first page indicates there's a structure involved or some kind of facility involved. And in the second page, it looks like it's just a participatory role, where you might have a contract. You could have a contract now with one of the school districts, but I'm unclear and I've tried to penetrate the outer reaches of our coordinating board and say, fuck it, you're on. And so far, that hasn't prevailed. So I'm not sure what's going to take us to get into their domain and find out what, but we'll get there. So we, we, we do have to go through the coordinating board for two reasons. One, they're going to comment on the bill. And I don't want them commenting on the bill regularly. I want them to be positive in some fashion. And number two, if we get the bill passed, they're going to comment on what we asked for. So they get two whacks in us, so to speak. And usually there's a fixed amount of money under those bills and I understand the figures that they passed in twenty-three, the figure was somewhere around eight hundred, eight hundred billion dollars. And I don't know how that money was spent, I don't know if some of it remains, but it's a rather handsome fund should be left out. And we've got a lot of kids in this county. They're at the low end of the economic level, we're either doubling up on their two years, getting ready for tech school or jumping into tech school would be a very important asset. Judge, I'm going to let you, Mr. Aiken, who I've been acquainted with over the last two and a half, three days, I'm going to let you jump in at this point. I think I've given you the basic information. I'm, should I say this, semi-retired lawyer, doing a few things pro bono. I'm not asking for any money for this. I'm functioning as the president of Wilson Area Children's Foundation. And it's somebody who just produced a daughter who went through three school districts and got out of education because of some of the difficulties. But she's currently been what's called a teacher of design program materials, a law winning deal. She's writing all the programs for A, B, C, D licensed people for your water and your resources into the state of Texas and the middle of the state. And she's doing that for TRWA. So she's much happier to do something where she's got some constraints and she's not arguing with teachers and she's not arguing with students and she's not arguing with parents. Wasn't my intention for her to go there, but she's there and she's happy. She's coaching, by the way.
So just that you know, Mr. Rosenberg, the newly developed Wilson County Economic Development Corporation, one hundred percent pockets. And it happens to be a topic of their conversation at every meeting that they have.
I think we need some little, one line.
I'll give them, I'll give them.
And probably need some from the chamber. The three items that you mentioned to me specifically, I think maybe a couple of checklists are the commissioners board, the superintendents, chamber, and the economic development commission. I think that's something we all need to produce a report.
Before I entertain a motion for this, Mr. Aiken, would you, it was the honors of this, read the proclamation so we know what we're going on.
Yes, sir. And before doing that, plain English, two lines. We are trying to bring technical education of a higher level to our area so that people who don't go the route of a traditional college education to find a career are able to be taught a trade. And I believe anybody who is watching what's going on right now, we're losing the trades and.
Particularly to this county.
And, and there are people who would be excellent at it and be able to have great livelihoods right here in their home. You know, one of the things about Wilson County is, is it's a great place to live, but we've got to be able to offer our children careers here. And they're, they're being forced to leave to go work out of county, out of state to be able to take and chase the American dream. So I hope this is a start, or rather, let's say a continuation of the work that all of our high schools and, and current education facilities are doing to be able to help out students transitioning into life.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the work that you've done and thank you, Judge. So a resolution in support of the passage of HP two thirty-eight by State Representative Ryan Ginn. Be it resolved that Wilson County Commissioners Court supports State Representative Ryan Ginn for introduction of HP two thirty-eight to include Wilson County as an authorized county for participation in the Texas State Technical College System and be it resolved, further resolved and declared that Wilson County Commissioners Court is hereby ready to support adoption of HP two thirty-eight and to support its implementation, excuse me, implementation and collaboration with the school districts of Wilson County for the purpose of establishing an effective method of providing technical training and education as authorized by HBA enacted by the eighty-eight legislature of two, two, two zero two three. All for the purpose of providing benefits to applicants pursuing a technical training, certified work positions and enhanced workforce in Wilson County, Texas for the benefit of current and future students and employers seeking to increase and enhance business and employment opportunities to Wilson County applicants. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wilson County Commissioners Court supports the passage of HP two thirty-eight. Passed and approved today's date, if we pass an approval.
All right, and I might have our meetings with the votes from the Mission Trail Railway. They're going to bring hundreds of jobs here, need these technical services. I'll entertain a motion to accept this resolution to the record.
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution to the record as a.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, second by Commissioner Perdola. Any further discussion regarding gen item number five? You're not a call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes against? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, second by Commissioner Perdola. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes against? We are adjourned. It is nine forty-seven a.m.